Call the meeting of the Committee of the Whole to order. It's Tuesday, September 21st at 5:00 PM. And I'd ask Lou and Kelly to note roll call. Under announcements, the Committee of the Whole will convene into closed session pursuant to Section 19.85 of the Wisconsin statutes for purposes of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session, discussion of negotiating strategy with respect to the town of Vienna, and discussion of negotiating strategy with respect to Parkland dedication or payment in lieu of Parkland dedication for Bear Tree Farms West in pursuant to Section 19.851(c) of the Wisconsin statutes for purposes of considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, compensation of village administrator and community development director in this instance. Minutes, we will entertain a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole minutes from September 7, 2021.
I move that we admit them, accept them.
We had a motion by Colleen. Rebecca, do you want to offer a second?
Sure.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Jane, abstain, please.
You abstain. Okay. We have one abstention. All right, five items for discussion. A discussion regarding grant for Parks, Reese, and Judd.
All right, I'm just pulling up the memo. But really, I think the memo kind of shares everything we have. I don't know, Judd, if there was anything that you wanted to add, but we're happy to answer any questions.
I think the memo covered it quite well, Reese. Thanks.
I didn't hear you, Judd.
I said, I think the memo covered it very well, Reese.
Are there questions?
Yes.
Rebecca.
Just want to, just a little bit of clarification. This is for playground equipment at Liberty Land Park, correct?
So the grant that we went out for is actually playground equipment for both Liberty Land and Fox Hills Park. So by applying for this grant, we would be able to get equipment for both. If we do decide to not accept this grant, then we would next year only go for playground equipment for Liberty Land.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Yep.
Any other questions or clarifications? And what is the timing on this? Do we know?
Yeah, so we would have to purchase the equipment yet this year, and we would have to purchase it by November 2nd, I believe it is.
Okay. Okay, and are you simply asking us to do a thumbs up? Or is this coming up on the Village Board?
Yep, so this would be coming up on the Village Board to accept the additional spending that would go into this year's budget if you all support it. Ultimately, if you guys don't support it, then we would not accept the grant, so.
Okay. All right. Everyone clear on that? Abby.
I guess I do have a question. So is Liberty Land, I guess prior to this grant application, is it scheduled for 2022?
Correct. We have, in the current CIP was Playground Replacement for Liberty Land in the 2022 CIP.
So is it basically like, you know, we buy it a little bit earlier than planned, but otherwise, is it kind of like taking one thing off our, at least the Parks part of our budget for 2022?
It would take a portion. We would still have the install costs.
Oh, yeah.
That would be in 2022, but the actual cost of the playground equipment then would be off of that.
Thanks.
Okay. All right, then this will come before us at our Village Board meeting. Discussion regarding the 2022 budget. Steve?
Yes, so according to the budget calendar, tonight is the first time you get to hear about significant changes in the budget. This is a chance for Department Heads and others to share what they have in mind when it's maybe a staffing change or service level change. And we'll also talk about the CIP a little bit. And then the next meeting is when we're starting to look at the numbers. We still don't have some of the state aides in finalized numbers, but Department Heads have provided me with all of their budgets, so it's time to plug that in. And we should have a better feel for it at the next meeting. It's still at a high level, but we're in accordance with the calendar. So I'll turn it over to whoever wants to start.
Do you want to take your mask off when you're talking? Your voice is soft. I'm struggling. Thank you.
Let me just start over?
No.
Okay.
I think everyone else probably heard you. I just can't lip read, so.
Steve, if you want to start, I don't know if you can bring up the CIP sheet. We can kind of go through that briefly. Thanks for your assistance from us working remotely.
Well, sure, go ahead, Reese.
So Greg's done a lot of work with the CIP through the years and really planning ahead for us with what projects we're going to be doing. And some are necessary and some are, you know, lined up in the right sequence that needs to happen with regards to state PISA ratings for roads. So this is a little different than maybe some previous board members have seen the CIP. And we thought we'd break it down. Steve did a great job breaking it down, making it a little easier. So starting at the top, there's a library fire shutter replacement. It's currently projected at about $150,000 to replace the shutter, which means we have to like fully pull the shutter out and put a new one in. We were trying to get an exception from the state of Wisconsin to do it in a different manner without that fire shutter. But thus far, we're not having success. So we have it in there at 150. If we need to, that's the only way we can replace it, then we will. But we're hoping that that can come in significantly less, like maybe down to $10,000 or so with the, basically, a water curtain, some sprinkler additions to it. So and you'll see across here, some of these have different funding sources. So that would come out of our borrowings there for the fire shutter. The firehouse sleeping remodel, we're working through that. Some of those funds would come from fire impact fees. And then the board, you may want to decide to use some of those ARPA funds to help cover that cost if that is so allowed by ARPA funding. We've got the pickleball and the Forest Street redesign in there at $465,000. We have about 250 set aside for the Forest Street redesign. The pickleball would be some borrowings there unless we decided we might want to use some park impact fees or other fees that we have available to use as those are constantly being replenished. But we're, at this point, we're not planning to use those. The Liberty Land place structure, the installation, $25,000 we have budgeted at this point. And then there'll be a trail connection to the shelter, so that's $15,000. The high school trail project is all being mostly covered through funding from a TAP grant. So that will be going next year. The remainder will be borrowed for by us. Then we've got a couple of reconstructions. This is where we get in. It's spread out amongst capital projects, but then water, sewer, and storm all have some roles to play in that. With the reconstruction, we're redoing everything, all the utilities underneath the road back up to the top of the surface. And then we have some resurfacing on West Mohawk, Old Indian, where he can pass, and then Trailside to Eagle Watch, and where he can pass the Eagle Watch. Those are all have PISA ratings of fours, which is about the time in which we want to do them. We'll also take on another chunk of that Jefferson Square part, another $25,000. That will leave one part left in 2023. And then that complete, will complete that obligation. We have to repave that one last time, and that will be turned over to Jefferson Square to maintain going forward. And then we have a South Hill Sewer lining. This is a great way to extend the life of the sewers by lining them. They kind of go in. We've done this one or two other times previously.
And just on North Street, Level Section.
Yep. And we have a trail resurface bridge to Conservancy Way. That's being funded through the, if I missed the...
There should be a Western Green Trail.
Oh, there it is up there.
Western Green Trail paving from Old Indian to Main Street with a bridge replacement.
So we had gotten a grant for $45,000 for the bridge. We did not get a grant for the remainder of the trail, but we want to move forward with that project and get it completed. Dawn should be happy with that. And then we've got a variety of vehicles and equipment that we're looking to. We have some that are just regularly traded out year over year, and others are replacements, so. That's that. We usually have a CIP landing number of about 1.5 billion. However, with the costs of things escalating, we want to try to slide that up for the next couple of years. So this year, we would go up to 1.6 borrowing and then potentially landing at about 2 million borrowing over, potentially by in the fifth year from now. So what would that be, 27? Because roads are getting more expensive to maintain, and the other equipment is escalating as well. Are there questions for us, Greg or I or Reese?
Questions?
So this is a...
Where is the pickleball court targeted for?
It'll be in Fireman's Park.
Okay.
Just to the east of the basketball courts. We would remove that outfield fence. And then potentially, that would give us Reese some bigger area there in the outfield to do a couple of long fields for either soccer or flag football. But she could still program some youth baseball, T-ball, west ball in that infield that's there.
Okay. Other questions on any of these? Rebecca, I can't see you right now, so if you have one, will you speak up?
I will do that if I need to ask a question.
Thank you. Now I can see you.
Steve, do we cover everything there?
I think so.
Okay.
Did I miss the River Road discussion?
Oh, you're right. Yep, sorry.
Mohawk.
We talked about the Mohawk ones. River Road, so we have from ABS to the bridge. So there's that new section of River Road that's being completed this year that gets to ABS. If Pinseekers should come through with theirs, and then also Yahar Grove comes through, there's some developer funds that are slated for River Road that we would plan to do that section of River Road from ABS up to the bridge, the suburb of the edge of that bridge. And that would then have that section of River Road redone, rebuilt. And then there would be left then from the north side of that southerly bridge all the way up to, what's that, South Street? Yep. That we would then tackle in the next coming year. So those are, there's funding that's, are being applied. Most of it is covered, I think, short of $26,000 would be for borrowing. The rest is covered by those developer funds. And so if Yahar Grove doesn't get approved or Pinseekers doesn't come through, then we may not need to do that at this point. And it'd be something we can hold off on until the timing's right.
And what was the source of funds recommended for the library fire shutter?
That's just from borrowing.
Okay. I just wondered why it was in red.
It was in red because it's something we're hoping is going to go down in cost or may come off, just like the River Road may come off. You know, it's, we're planning to do it next year, assuming all goes as planned. But if it does have to come out, then that's where it's at. And the same with the library shutter. Hopefully, again, we can get this, an exemption from the state of Wisconsin to make this a much easier process and less cumbersome to not only us as a taxpayers and what we have to pay, but also to the library and having to interrupt their operations for what could be several months.
Okay. Steve, do you have anything else?
Yeah. Again, this isn't finalized by any means. There's some more work to do. We'll probably put some alternates in here as well should our bids come back positive like they did last year. So we'd be in a position to do some other things that we had to take out just to meet the 1.6 you see there, 1.595.
And thankfully to the board, giving us that opportunity. We were able to do some projects this year, if you recall, that would have been on this year's slate to do. But because of the good pricing we got, we were able to slide those up this year and get them done. So this certainly helps us get, starting to catch up on the roads that have been neglected for a while.
Great. Okay. So is that... Chief?
Yes. If you don't mind, I'll just take this off and make it a little easier for you. Yep, just a real high overview of the Police Department request for next year. Obviously, this is all fluid, and Steve's a great resource to work with us. But I'm asking for another position, and the position is purposeful. The position I'm asking, I'm asking to do reorganization step two for me. When I started, I came before the board and eliminated Detective Sergeant position and made it to Police Lieutenant positions. So there's two steps to the reorg. What I'm asking to do is offset and create a captain position, so I would have a true number two, much like a deputy administrator is in the Village Hall, then not fill a lieutenant position. So basically, reclassify one of the lieutenants to another management position. The additional position I'm seeking, and again, this is fluid, and I'm working through a bunch of things and talked to Steve about it at length, is to add a police sergeant position. Now, that comes with a, another reclassification. Currently, right now, all the sergeants are classified as patrol sergeants. What I will work with Corey to do is to just reclassify them as police sergeants. So in other words, they can be interoperable between a patrol function or an investigative function without trying to pigeonhole anybody into one thing. It's a development part. The reason I'm asking for a sergeant's position is it really gets into the accountability that I come before the board and talk about quite a bit. Transparency, the things that we are seeing in the community with additional drug problems coming towards us, additional problems basically coming up from the city. Our pursuit numbers are up. It's necessary for us to really make sure that we are doing the best we can, especially with the young group of police officers, to mentor, coach, guide, and yet have somebody there responsible to supervise and be accountable for the high-risk things that we end up getting involved with to keep the community safe. I don't know how far, Steve, I got with you on this, but the request I'm making is to not create the position until July of next year. And again, that's a little bit purposeful on my part. One, because it's, you know, I get it, six months of budget. The other part that is more on my mind is that would give one of my female police officers the ability to compete at a higher level for a position if she chose to apply. So I'm seeking ways to diversify the leadership team as well as the rest of the department. And if I don't, I mean, by the standard I set for the last promotion I did when Sergeant Payne was promoted, the female officer would be eligible applied today. She's got five years of service. She could do it. If I would wait till July, that would give her six years, put her in a better position, more development time. Again, it's the same thing. The best candidate would win out for the position, but it would poise her better to be a very good competitive force in the process. So there's just a couple of things with that. Those are the big asks. That'll be in there. Couple of the other things that are in the Police Department budget, and part of this goes across a couple of departments. In our capital line, which is, you know, different obviously than the CIP line, Judd just talked about, there are some items that we were, we discussed sharing across different departments. Things like a second speed board. We get significant speeding complaints throughout the village from residents. And we have one speed board now. It's getting a little old, but it's still serviceable. We use it like crazy. As soon as we can get it out on the street, it's out there. It'll be out there, just about snow flies. But we get enough speeding complaints that would be valuable for us to have a second board. There's another item in there that's a drone that we would use specifically for people who wander away from some of the memory care places, missing people, missing children, but also would be able to be shared with public services, with Parks and Rec, with communications, other village entities with development for sure. Even Brandy could use it for some of the zoning issues that we might face. So this is really kind of across the thing. When I've talked to Judd about that previously, and we had a very preliminary discussion about it, the different ways we could use it. Greg talked about some of the village projects that would be able to be used. So it landed up in our, in our capital line, but really, it's one of those items that we're looking to kind of use across the village entities so that it's used. It's not something that just sits and we only use it for certain things. Yeah, also, just a different, there'll be a covert radar unit. It's simpler to the one we have now. It's called a Jamar. There's a different company I found that creates them. They're a little bit cheaper. It's the one that we hang on a sign. It gives us car counts. Again, it's something that Greg would, Greg is, I've showed him the data that comes out of it, the reports that come out of it. It would work for their purposes as well, so we could co-deploy it with public services as they look at car counts on roads. A lot of, a lot of places will use the tubes across the roads to count cars. Obviously, it doesn't work too much when you get into adverse weather. People hit the brakes just right. It'll tear the tubes, things of that nature. So this is just another way for him to get data, for us to get data on speed to make sure that we know where we're best deploying our resources. I've also asked, as I looked at our vehicle replacement plan, we're getting a couple of cars that are getting high mileage. And when we found, when we get Fords that hit about 100,000 miles, they significantly break down. It's not because, I know in past, we've talked about a car hitting 100,000 miles is just getting warmed up. For every hour a vehicle sits and idles, you have to add about 33 miles to it. So for the now and time you're on a traffic stop at a traffic crash at a scene with the car running, we're adding, it's not just 100,000 miles added. There's a lot more that goes into it, into the wear and tear of it. So we have a couple of vehicles, two vehicles that are getting close. One is at 95,000, the other is at about 86,000. Shockingly, the one with 86,000 miles is costing us more in maintenance right now than the higher mileage car. So it's just something that we're looking to, I'm just going to be implementing and planning tomorrow to kind of spread the mileage a little bit more and kind of reshuffle the deck a little bit in case there's some restraints that just don't allow that to happen. But again, it's just something you'll see in there. I think there's other areas too that we've cut out of the budget. If I look at taking out the items that I discussed with a capital line and was to go to one vehicle, which is what we generally replace every year, the budget I submitted to Steve is almost a 7% reduction from what is currently in 2021. So we're trying to be his best stewards of the fiscal funds that were given. We appreciate all the support we're given. We're trying to manage it as best we can. These are just a couple of the bigger asks that I do have. And I just got it back, so I apologize for not getting it to you, but it would have been really late, and I didn't think it was fair to drop it on you at the last minute. I got a staffing study back that we just completed. It's very detailed. When I look at adding staff, it's not something we do just on a whim. It's not something we take lightly because we know there's a lot of impacts that come with it. When you get the staffing report, and I'll email it to you here the coming days, but it's more than just population. And there's a lot of different analysis points that you'll see in it. You know, if you look at a per capita approach, just as a, as a starting factor, based upon population, it would look like our, our staffing level should be 21. Currently, it's 20. If I look at it across the nation, if you look at it across the US, based upon the per capita, staffing level should be 22. Okay? Comparable agency is about 22.75 is what it came out to be. And the other approach to me that gets to be interesting is the workload analysis, which to me kind of speaks a little bit more than just straight up per capita, just looking at how many residents we have. And that one shows over 22 sworn positions for agency our size based on workload. It kind of goes into calls for service at over 8,000 calls for service in the last 12 months. Other factors allowing for officers to go out and do community policing events. We had great success with our Family Fun Night, but again, that all goes into the amount of time and things that officers spend. So I will get you this report. Again, I didn't want to drop it last second and have you feel like I'm dropping, trying to slip something by you. That's not the point of this. And I know tonight, obviously, is just the overview of it. And as things progress, I will be able to provide more information. But I can answer questions if you have something specific. I know you haven't really seen too many numbers, so it's hard to get too specific.
Questions? Abby?
I was wondering if you could explain again, like, the reorganization and, and, you know, what this, I guess I'm like trying to picture in my head like the staffing chart and what, what it has been and how it's going to change, or, or if you're planning on doing a visual or something, just to...
I'll give you a visual in time. I just want to get it as clean as I possibly can. I've got a start of one, but it's not exactly laid out how I want it to be. So just on an overview level, currently, it goes chief, and then there's two lieutenants. Now, that's, that's okay, but it gets to be a who's in charge when I'm off, I'm on vacation, wherever, or in off hours. It does create a limited internal issue. So by creating a number two or a captain, so right now I have, I'm a one. Lieutenant Riedel is the second because he's got more time in rank, and then Lieutenant Berg is three because he's less senior. But be creating a captain position, Lieutenant Riedel and Lieutenant Berger both actually in a very good position to compete for it. If neither one would prove to be suitable, I would have to hold pat and just leave it. It's not an added position. So in a reorg, I would eliminate or not fill one of the lieutenant positions at this point. It would just sit empty. And it would be classified as to a rank of captain. So it'd go, instead of spreading out right away, it'd go down and then spread out with different sergeants. The fourth sergeant position would be a combination of supervising more of the specialized services. So I would reorganize the department to be patrol services and specialized services that would cover admin and as well as investigation, school resource, to have more direct supervision on a first-line level to get them out in the field. Hopefully, that kind of answers it. You'll, when you see the picture, I think it'll make a little more sense. I'm just not really ready to share the picture yet.
And just so I'm clear, you're not adding two positions. You're reclassifying existing positions.
I'm adding one position, which would be a patrol sergeant, or a sergeant is what I'm going to just call it. And then it would be a reclass of one lieutenant position.
All right. Thank you. Steven?
My understanding though is you're going to backfill if you hire sergeant within. You'll be adding an officer.
It would.
It'll be plus one sworn officer.
Correct. Yes.
It's just a matter of when that phases in, if it's halfway through the year, or you hire the officer first, or we'll talk more about that. But so there will be an additional officer putting him with, I've read the study. It's pretty straightforward. It does look like we're behind others with the information provided. So obviously, our community is its own community too, so I have to consider that. But look at how we're displaced with different islands, and we have interstates all over the place, and proximity to Madison. It makes sense. That would be comparable with the other ones. comparable with the other ones, uh, me. So the other point of clarification, when Chief, uh, mentioned seven percent decrease in his budget, I appreciate that very much. But that, uh, and that is the operating budget is not payroll and benefits. So don't, don't get excited that his budget overall is a decrease. It's not going to be.
Yeah, sorry. I wasn't trying to be misleading. I, I meant to mention that. I forgot. This is my, my bad.
That's why we're a team. Good. Any other questions? Abby?
Thank you. I just thought of another one. Um, I don't know if it's too early to know this yet, but do you know like, what percentage increase or, or anything with, with the police department part of the budget?
I, it would be a Steve question and I think it's a little early.
Too early? Okay.
All right. Well, I appreciate that. If there are no other questions, well, thank you. And we'll be looking at items in the regular village board meeting for you. So thank you. Public service update. Judd, do you have more?
I have a, a request as well that I'll be, uh, putting in the budget. So I am also going to be requesting a, a full-time position for the community, um, and a recreation and community enrichment, uh, department. Uh, so I put together some numbers. Um, the goal for this position would be that they would be the AC and sports coordinator. With the AC being in full operations this year, it was a, a lot of time, um, that was added and, oh, thank you. Uh, it was a lot of time that was added onto my, uh, daily, daily work. As an example, I actually pulled some numbers, um, between the months of April and August this year. I worked a hundred and eight point two five hours over, uh, what a typical work week would be, um, compared to last year, which obviously was a little different, was 12.25. And the year before was 23.25. Uh, so that was a, a big impact on my, my schedule of, of trying to get things done. But, uh, ultimately this position would be in charge of, uh, managing the athletic complex, working with the rental groups, working with the adult, softball leagues, the Windsor heat, um, really being that main point of contact, being in charge of the concessions. And then also, uh, take over the, uh, youth, uh, sports and look to maybe increase our adult sports options as well throughout the year. Um, also looking to increase some of the camp opportunities that we would have for kids. So there's an opportunity for us to have some increased revenue by having this position. Um, along with, I looked to do some cuts or budget savings to help kind of cover that cost of what the salary would be, which does not include the cost of what the benefits would be. But, um, overall between the cuts that I'd be looking to make in the recreation budget and then the additional, um, revenues that would be, I'm projecting for next year. It is, I believe, forty, forty-five, five, um, is, is that, that difference? So, uh, hoping to have that some help for next year, uh, with some of the additional responsibilities that I had taken over with the reorganization.
Questions? Abby?
Uh, just wondering if you can, um, share that, uh, spreadsheet.
Certainly.
Thank you. Other questions? Jim?
Sorry, I'm just sort of wondering what sort of level of a person that you're looking for? Maybe in wage range or?
Yeah. So it'd be a salaried position. Um, and I had put up the salary range up there would be forty-two to forty-five. So I'm hoping to get someone with some rec experience already. Um, we've been very fortunate to have an internship program that's gone well, but it's hard training people every year to kind of learn how to do it again, to get them in the process during an already very busy time in the rec world. So.
I have a question.
Rebecca?
Uh, yeah, you had mentioned that this has the potential of bringing in added revenue. Do you have any kind of a projection of approximately? I mean, in other words, would the, the salary be offset and would it be bringing in more than that?
Yeah. So in the sheet that I have up on the screen, that's some of the projected revenue that I have, uh, that would be offsetting. So adding a K through second basketball program, the projected revenue for that would be $3,500. Um, adding a baseball softball camp, $2,000 soccer camp. Um, and then some of the, since we'll have a full, full season at the athletic complex next year, having additional tournaments that are going to be out there and the additional revenue that that brings in, and the sales of the concession. So those are those offsetting revenues that are projected. And that's being, I would say conservative.
So the salary would be somewhere between, between forty and forty-five, we'll just say that. And then the projected extra income coming or extra revenue coming in would be somewhere around the thirty? Is that what I'm understanding or am I misunderstanding that?
Yeah. So it's, this is the projected additional offsetting revenue. And then these are budget cuts that I had looked to make to kind of fill that whole gap. So there would be some cuts that I've made to the, the budget, which is, you know, will no longer print program guides. That's $8,200. And then we would be cutting that internship program, um, along with the revenue we'd put aside to pay for a staff person at the schools over the summer. Um, and that makes up that total difference. So it's 18,700 plus the 27, um, together. And that makes up the cost of what the wage would be.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Jim?
Sorry, Reese. I don't know if you actually said this, but I'm sort of looking at Steve too. When we say like 45,000, forty to forty-five, that's the salary. And I'm assuming you're talking budgets. And generally you use a multiplier, two and a half. I don't know if we're similar with.
Yes. So the, the benefits are not included in here and Reese doesn't have that information readily available. Um, so I will take her information, plunk it into our budget and come up with the benefits. And we usually, um, are conservative. We'd like that person's probably has family health insurance, things like that. So, um, it'll be at least two and a half or a, oh, it's about 35% of the salary for us.
Good question. Anything else? Abby?
Uh, just more of a comment. I'm thinking back on our, um, housing supply and demand analysis. And, um, the salary range would make it, um, pretty expensive or impossible to, to buy some of the houses and, or do some of the rentals that we currently have in the county. So I just feel like if we're, I, I know we're not making a decision tonight on, on this or, or anything presented budget wise necessarily. But, um, if we're going to ha- have an additional staff and they're at this salary range, then I think we have, I, I would hope that we would commit as a board and as a village to, um, continue to, um, look at affordable housing options so that they can afford to live here. I, I, I hope they would want to live here because it's a great place to live and, and that they would have the option if, if that's what they would like.
Thank you. All right. I think we've, we've gone the round of questions. Thank you, Reese. It sounds like a good thing to be looking at. We have, uh, community development up. Judd, did you have anything else you wanted to add? Steve?
Yes. So we're still under five, two.
Oh, I was going down the line. Thank you.
Might do that yet, but, uh, we're still talking about budget things and any other department heads that have things to share, feel free.
Thank you. You're not jumping. Well, how about five, three?
Nothing to report.
How about? Five, four. Chief Olson, do you have anything else?
Yep. I was, uh, I've been asked quite, uh, several times. Yep. It should be open on the bottom. That's fine. Uh, I've been asked several times about just an update on the body worn camera, in-car camera system. So I bought a couple of show and tell things real quick. It shouldn't take, but just a few minutes. So we was in that one. So what I'm just kind of throwing around is the, uh, body one camera.
And here.
He's just handing out the body camera right now.
Oh, got it.
You record yourself if you want. You record yourself if you want. So I just handed out a couple of cameras, just so you can see what they look like, uh, get an idea, feel for them. What I did is we pulled just a couple of videos, um, off our system. Just to give you a little bit of a, a view of what we see, uh, this is actually an interesting one, uh, from within the last week. This is some of the challenges we're facing with vehicles. This is overnight officer, uh, tried to stop a vehicle at Southbound on Highway 51 at Windsor Road. The curtains, she actually observed the vehicle on Highway V. And I'll just let it play. We, we purposely muted the sound just for, make it easier. But, uh, they kind of made their own off ramp. It's a stolen car. Kind of goes under the fence. If you've seen the, you could probably see the marks coming across highway or across Northtown Road. But that, uh, within the last couple of weeks that this happened, um, it's still an active investigation as far as it, but there's nothing to the, at this point that we can, have to worry about the over records part of it. So you can just kind of see the clarity from the in-car is pretty good. Um, it definitely is a very advantageous tool, uh, much better than some of the other video option that we had looked at. So that's just the in-car, what that kind of looks like. Uh, to get an idea of one of the benefits, I was talking to some of the officers last night about how, what they think of the cameras. The big benefit they like is this, they don't have to divert attention to writing and other things in the field. This is a body worn camera. Officer McGlynn is wearing it. He made a traffic contact. You can see it's about the seven, eight hundred block of South Street. And if we might not, must not have the sound on unfortunately. Let's see. All right. But we don't have the sound on. So unfortunately I apologize, but it's, you would normally, you could hear it. We can, uh, redact obviously with the G-Tech software. We put this, I had Lieutenant Berg put this kind of late this afternoon. But, uh, another option is just to do the face itself. It has facial recognition that it'll just blot that face out throughout the entire, uh, encounter. Last thing we just asked you to, I'd list, had him pull up is for supervisors, um, they're required monthly to watch a certain number of videos from the people that they lead, that they supervise. So they can do side by side with the left side of the screen being the in-car camera and the right side of the screen being his body worn camera. To kind of critique for performance, look for things that would cause us concern, bad technique, bad positioning, uh, officer safety type things. Other items that we hear about obviously all the time are indicators of implicit bias and things of that nature. So the supervisors review quite a bit of video every month of the people that they're responsible for. And this is just kind of what the dashboard indicates. Uh, you can see on most of them, the top, uh, little L appear indicates for the viewer that the lights are on in the car. The red and blue lights are activated. There's also a sensor for brakes. I hope I don't see the C because that means there was a crash. Or, um, you can also get the speed on the bottom of the screen. It will populate when they're moving. So just a little bit of update on the G-Tech, because I've been asked about it before. So there you have it. If there's any questions, I can answer them.
Questions? Does Greg and Judd have their hand up?
Yep.
Yep. Uh, we just wanted to give an update on the leaf collection. Um, I know we kind of put it out on Facebook, but we're looking to start October 11th on the east side of, uh, Main Street. Just kind of like what we do with the brush row. Eat, the first week will be the east side of Main. Second week will be, uh, the west side, and then we'll just keep rotating. Uh, we will, once we get the east side done, we will continue over to the west side if we get it done within a week. And then we'll just start over. So yeah, we're, we'll go until the snow flies or until, you know, most of these are picked up.
How, how have we been getting the word out?
So we've got, uh, Facebook and the village website. Uh, Stacy's put it together a lot of things for that. I just learned about, um, we can send text messages and emails, um, general emails. So we're going to do that. And I do know we put it in the monthly. Uh, last month, we just sent it out in that monthly email, just saying that we're going to plan on it. I didn't have the schedule quite done yet, so, um, that'll go out this month as well.
About it. Public Safety Night, the chief put on, um, the first person that came up made a beeline across the parking lot to see this leaf back truck was very excited about it. Uh, but we've been taking it out to different events. We'll have another one in, uh, October. Partnering with the, uh, fire department, we'll have it out again and an opportunity to educate the public about it. Um, and get eyeballs on it. But there was a, quite a few people came through. Chief's public safety night was outstanding. And, um, we had a lot of people that rolled through and got to see the, the truck.
That's exciting. Rebecca?
Uh, yeah, just on the, a quick question on the leaf, uh, collection. You mentioned Main Street. What about, is it only going to be on Main Street or I, I'm just wanting clarification?
East, east of Main Street. So the first week will stay east of Main Street and then west of Main Street, kind of like we do for the brush pickup. Yeah.
Blonde moment. Thank you.
Jim?
I just thought of something for publicity. Do you want to put like a sign out by the, the whatever, where we bring our leaves normally? Or even park the truck there for a weekend so people see it?
Yeah, the yardway site. Um, we certainly can, um, print a sign and put it out there, um, just as a reminder. That's an easy way, easy thing to do.
Any other questions? Anything else from Judd or Greg?
Oh, no.
All right. Oh, go ahead.
All right. I was just going to mention, you know, River Roads closed, like, um, you probably all are aware of that. Um, from north of Innovation, Cuba Valley to ABS, um, driveway basically. And that's going to go through to November 15th. Um, hopefully it'll be done sooner than that, but, um, as of right now, that's, that's the timeline for that. Um, south of Innovation Drive, that has been, um, curb and guttered, uh, concrete was installed. And October 1st, they plan on paving that section of the road of River Road to Windsor Road from Innovation to Windsor, that little section. So other than that, um, all the village projects have, for the most part, wrapped up, innovation's done and, we're setting pretty good.
Colleen? And then Rebecca?
Just a comment for Judd and Greg. I saw a snide remark on Facebook comments again this morning about the leaf truck being the $600,000 monstrosity. Can we mention as often as we possibly can that this is used for other purposes also? Because there was some comment made along those lines too, that it was going to be sitting in the garage for most of the year.
Yeah, definitely. We can put something together. Um, you know, we can use it for snow removal, brush pickup, um, all sorts of stuff. And it didn't cost 600,000. It was only 217,000.
Yes, I went through all my notes, three notebooks worth. I couldn't find the price.
Yeah.
I knew it was two something. Thank you.
All right. Rebecca?
Yeah, just a quick question on the Innovation Drive. Did you say that is opened again?
And innovation, innovation drive is open. Uh, we do have some, uh, crosswalks to install. That's just some paint. But Innovation is dry and River Road south of Innovation is open to Windsor Road.
I, I had a quick question in terms of how that all transpired, uh, in, in terms of when it was initially being shut down. Cause, um, I had a number of folks, I know you guys heard it and I'm not trying to bash you guys at all. But was it the, was it us not putting up the signs or was it the developer getting ahead of themselves with that issue? When, when, when they started shutting down Innovation Drive before it was supposed to?
So there, yeah, they were grinding the road or pulverizing. So there, yeah, they were grinding the road or pulverizing the road and they were supposed to keep, keep it open. And they slid the barricade closed. The workers slid the barricade.
Okay.
You couldn't get through. And I went out there and.
Well, I know you got, you guys got on it really fast. I really appreciated that. But I, I know a lot of people were wondering what happened? Where was the breakdown on that? So that kind of better explains it. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yep, no problem.
Okay. Anything else for Judd or Greg?
I don't know.
Thank you, gentlemen. Michelle?
No, Randy and I are good. Thank you.
Okay.
You're good too.
Corey's not with us. Reese, do you have anything else?
I'll just give a big or quick recap. River Fest was two Saturdays ago now. But it went really well. It's kind of nice to have our first year back after 2020. I think we probably throughout the day had about a thousand people that were actually at the event. Everyone seemed to really enjoy it. We actually just got some pictures today that we're hoping to be able to share on Facebook. Of the, the day and just, it looks a lot of fun. So thanks for everyone that came out and just wanted to share.
Thank you. Any questions for Reese on that? If not, I have a question. The next item is to move into closed session. We have about nine minutes left. Do we have enough time to take on an item enclosed or should we do all of our items under the village closed? Steve is shaking his head yes. Okay, we'll do that. So I would, if we're not going into closed, I would entertain, unless there's any other business, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I, just one question.
Sure.
I just, in terms of the village code of conduct, I just would like to know if our code of conduct is enforceable or just simply a show.
Well, it's, it's not an enforcement code or ordinance, but it is an agreement that we as a board make with one another in terms of how we're going to operate and treat one another.
Okay, so when fellow trustees do things that they, that go against that code of conduct. How is that going to be handled? Is it going to be considered village business or not?
I don't know if I'm.
I'd suggest this be put on as an agenda item for a future meeting if we're going to have discussion about it.
Then I would like it to be put on a future agenda item.
We will consider that and we'll talk more about it going forward.
Thank you.
All right. Now is there a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. We will be back here in seven minutes. All right, we're back. I'd like to call the regular village board meeting to order on Tuesday, September 21st at 6:00 PM. I would ask Lou and Callie to note roll call and I would ask Jim to lead us in the recitation of the pledge.
America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Announcements, the village board will convene into closed session pursuant to section 19.851E of the Wisconsin statutes for purposes of deliberating and negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Discussion of negotiating strategy with respect to the town of Vienna and discussion of negotiating strategy with respect to Parkland dedication or payment in lieu of Parkland dedication for Bear Tree Farms West. And pursuant to section 19.851C of the Wisconsin statutes for purpose, purposes of considering employment government. Employment promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Tonight, compensation of village administrator and community development director. Get my trifocals moved wrong and I can't read. Consent agenda, approval of minutes from September 7th, 2021. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Abby made the motion. Is there a second? We have a second by Colleen. Any discussion, edits or corrections? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Abstention?
Aye.
We have one abstention. Motion carries. Appearances before the board. We have a couple. We have Michael Lawton and Mike Hawkins. I think they're coming together. And this is regarding Bear Tree Farms West.
We just, I'm going to take this thing off violating any rules. We would like to make some comments, especially Mike about some of the facilities in the Bear Tree. Baseball complex, I guess, as Alan and I have labeled in the agreement now. And have Mike comment on that just so when you're deliberating on this, you have some idea of some of the options and aspects of the facility. So if I could have Mike comment on that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, so I'll try to be brief. I don't know if you can call up the drawings that were part of the, I understand you just received the agreement and haven't had a chance to absorb it. And we'll be discussing it later, but there's a couple exhibits within the packet that was sent and if Wayne can get those. Okay, mainly there's some language in the agreement that talks about the opportunity to use, not just for the full size baseball diamond, but how that space could be used for other youth programs, whether it's softball and/or baseball. There's a picture in there of a facility that was built. There's, and I've got several other examples too, but the gist of it is there's opportunity to, to use it for more than just 13 to 18 year old or adult baseball by putting some smaller fields in similar to the ones and the uses that you have here. And in the park here, you would have that opportunity to expand. What you do out at your new complex and also down here and use that space for those age groups. So on that concept right there, there's two, two smaller diamonds drawn down the right field and left field line. Those are 200 plus foot fences that are, or lines that are drawn on there. And just representing the fact that two youth organizations could be playing at the same time. Whereas what's shown for parking is probably only adequate for the one large diamond. So if it was going to be used for two fields, there's the parking lot would need to have another row parking on the west side to accommodate both fields. But that's the main, and I don't know if you could show the other picture that was in the packet of. This, this actually represents three larger diamonds. But it gives you an idea. The fence would be a little different in the old field, but the idea of how to use it for more than just real baseball, I guess, is what he likes to call it. So that's all I really wanted to point out. When you see language in there about multiple uses in the youth programs, it's this type of thing.
Thank you. As we know, this has been an evolving discussion and it's been evolving with looking at the, the, the multiple uses of, of the diamond. This looks like, like fun and it also looks like you could do other things there too. Whether you chose to maybe have soccer or something on the field.
And I'm sure you'll talk to Alan post-session, but Al made some changes to what I had written. Al had made some changes to what I had originally written and we, you know, are agreeing that yes, there are other supplementary things that you can do as long as the main, the main use is preserved. And you can take a look at the, how the language has evolved on that. But yeah, we recognize you can do other things and I'm sure that surfaces suitable for other activities. So.
Thank you. Questions? All right.
Thanks, thanks for listening.
Oh, thank you. It's great pictures. Thank you for sharing. All right. Moving on. Old business. Discussion and possible action to direct staff to solicit proposals for waste collection services. Judd?
So a week or two ago, we received a email from Waste Management offering us the opportunity to get out of our current agreement. They don't feel as if they can adequately serve our needs through a variety of things, being it either their equipment and not being able to keep it up as well as finding adequate staff to deliver the services that are needed. So we are requesting the board's approval to go out. We've got an RFP plan that's pretty similar to what we put out the last time. We added and tweaked a couple of things to include there. And would like to go out and solicit bids for that. We're, we've put that out as early as tomorrow and then have it bids come back in early October. We would then decide those and bring them to the board by the middle meeting in October for an agreement to say, hey, yes, this is the one. Then we would have Al or other attorneys work with them to finalize an agreement and a contract. And line up the time in which they would move over or take over the services, whoever the new person would be. Waste Management has offered us to, they, they sent over an amendment that gives us an out starting at the end of the year or the start of the new year, basically with a new service. But we don't know if we'll have a service that quickly. They've shared with us that that timeframe could be amended. So we're, in theory, what would happen is once we're signing the contract, if we uncover a new vendor, we would sign a contract to that new vendor. And then also sign that amendment ending our, our services with Waste Management.
Questions for Judd?
Yeah, can we get a quote on large item pickup maybe? A lot of residents would like to see that, say, once, once a year, just kind of as an, as an amendment. And see what, what the price would be.
We, we have in the RFP a request for a large waste pickup dumpster at the yard waste facility. But if they needed, if they couldn't get it down there, then they could, they can still contract separately with that vendor to have it come and picked up and hauled off. But it'll be an alternate bid into that, into our quote. Typically that might drive the costs up rather dramatically.
Other questions for Judd? Abby?
I was wondering, would the RFP include what we currently have with twice a year electronics recycling and the cardboard dumpster?
Yes, both of those have been added into the RFP. So the cardboard dumpster is just, is part of our requests or requests that we have as a standard for areas that they pick up that are village property, including out at the AC. We need a bigger dumpster during the summertime. So those have all been added into the RFP to adjust to where we're at currently and then potentially where we might like to be in the future.
Rebecca?
Yeah, another thing I would like to see is obviously we get recycle once every other week. And that obviously should be part of that, but I'd like to see them also potentially give us a, a secondary, you know, like an additional option for that, you know, once a week for recycle. I keep getting a lot of people asking me about that and I know that was a significant cost factor why we didn't go with that previously. But I'd like to just see what new bidders might put for that.
We certainly can if the board's wishes to have that added as an alternate. I do know that it's probably an extra hundred, $150,000 a year additional, which would be a significant increase with our levy limits and expenditure restraint program. It would be a significant increase to the taxpayers potentially to add that in to the budget for this year. But if, if you'd like, I guess, to at least solicit that bid, we certainly can if that's the board's wishes. But it'll be, it's an additional cost for sure.
And, and I know, and will we still continue to have the cardboard pickup out at the, the waste facility where the?
Yep, they'll still have that, that out there. And I, I do know that there has been an increase. I've heard many people ask as well for additional recycling pickup. I think there's an increase in home deliveries. So I, I think us offsetting that, if people know that there's a cardboard recycling of the yard waste, they can, that will certainly help eliminate it. And I do see when I'm out driving around, a lot of people don't break down their boxes, which certainly limits your opportunity or space in which to put it. So there, we need to have an education campaign as well up to the say, hey, make sure you're breaking your boxes down. And efficiently putting them in your dumpsters. You're giving yourself more room.
Judd, will we have to get new bins?
No.
Okay.
We, we own the bins. So the ones that we provide now, and Greg reminded me that if somebody wants a second bin, they can buy a second recycling bin and have it at their home to be picked up. So there is that option for people if they want.
That's good to know.
Yeah, but we own the bins. We would continue to, to own them and they would, whoever would service us would have, have to have the ability to be able to pick those bins and empty them, the 65 and 95 gallon varieties.
Abby?
I was just gonna point out, and I'm not sure if that's what Judge just said, but if it is, I apologize and repeating it. But I believe people that, well, this, I think this is the case for both trash and recycling, that if they have higher than normal amounts that they can, at their own expense, buy an additional either trash or recycling bin. And that might be a good option for them. If, if breaking down boxes and using the cardboard dumpsters and, you know, enough to make up for that.
Okay. Steve?
Judd, if they do buy their own container, is there a monthly or is it a charge individually to those people for the pickup?
I don't, I'm not exactly sure. I'll have to look into that and let you know.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? If not, Judd would like approval to issue the RFP. So I'd entertain a motion. We're doing thumbs up, but let's have a motion.
I knew that we approve him putting out an RFP.
All right, we have a motion by Bill, a second by Rebecca. Any further discussion?
So Judd, I just have a curiosity question. It seems like we've had a falling out with Waste Management. Do you think they'll actually put in a bid for this RFP?
I, I don't know. Probably not. I would guess not since they, they want to release us and they, they don't feel as if they can adequately serve us. But you know, who knows?
Okay. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Can I just ask? Can I just ask a quick clarifying? Did the board intend, do they want me to get an alternate bid for weekly recycling pickup? I know Rebecca had asked for that, but I didn't hear any other trustees ask that and I just want to make sure I'm not missing something as we put this RFP out.
What do you think, folks?
I think yes.
All right, we, let's, let's have a show of hands for yes. We have Rebecca, show, and no, show of hands. All right. No. We don't, we don't need to do that, but we, we might want to do some advertising on Facebook or social media or signs that give people clues on how to deal with their excess, whether it's buy a bin or take cardboard to the waste yard site or other, other options.
Yep, certainly will do that.
Okay, Jim?
I just wonder when you put that notice out, Judd, you just used a round number of 150,000 if even mentioned that. It's like we're trying to limit how much we're spending taxpayers' money. And if you please break that down, we won't get to the point hopefully of spending that much money on another weekly thing.
And the other thing is, you know, wherever we can diminishing our, our environmental impact. And so let's, let's help people to learn how to help us do that. So we can, we can be good stewards. All right. Discussion and possible action regarding irrigator sewer adjustments. It says. What'd I do?
I guess I brought it up because we had a discussion in the past with the individuals that were irrigating all year and we were gonna allow, the way I remember it is they were gonna fill out a form and then you could compare to their off months to figure out their water usage and give them some sort of credit. I just wondered, there's at least two individuals that I know of that's recently built houses and they watered or overwatered their yard for a month and then was very surprised at their water bill. I wonder if there's a way to credit them, the, I guess, the MMSD impacts also.
So when we worked through this as staff, trying to come up with the simplest, most easy plan, that was an area that we, we said this, there's not a way to do that because they don't have a history put forward. And to come up with a guesstimate wouldn't necessarily be fair to everybody else. It also feels as if you're moving into our community, there's some buy-in that needs to occur in that first year, just like you have to pay for additional new services being added to your house. For the building of the house, there's also going to be that from a watering standpoint, if you want your lawn to, to take off in a manner that you find acceptable, right? Some people are gonna say, I'll let it grow as it grows and other people want it lush and green tomorrow. So everybody has that option, but during that first year, you won't have that. The second year, you certainly can look to recover that credit.
Quick question. Is that, is that true if somebody is moving into a house that has an existing record or is it just for new builds? What you were just talking about, Judd?
So somebody moved into a house and they started irrigating, there's gonna be a record of the water usage at that house from the previous owner, but they certainly could apply and look to get some sort of a discount off of what that previous owner used. And, you know, in theory, if they're a heavy water user, they may get more of a break that first year, but the second year it'll catch up with them when we go, when, when their regular water usage is in cycle for them.
Okay, thanks. Just wanted that for clarification.
So in our packet, there's an irrigation credit policy outline?
Yes, that was what we had shared back in, whenever it was, May or June. We have to have, Al's got, he's been rather busy with other things, but he will draft that language that'll make it so and bring it back before the board when, when the time is, before next year, right? We'll have this in place before the time that people need to make the requests, which was the end of April. So sometime later this, this year, early part of next year, we'll have it before the board to approve that irrigation credit adjustment.
Okay, but you, do you need additional action from us tonight or just?
Oh, if the board had, had the, the request and brought it forward, so that's why it's here.
All right, good. And Jim, does that answer what you were hoping to cover?
That answers what I was hoping to discuss, yeah.
All right, thank you. All right. Update and discussion regarding finance director recruitment. Steve?
Thank you. We still have only had the one candidate, unfortunately. So nothing new since the last time we met. I do have interacted with a number of people and this is not unusual just right now in in today's marketplace. It's just difficult to get people. And so what I, what I have done is talked with QTI and said, let's drop the salary. Surprisingly, I think 92 under 10 is what we had it in the listing is probably too high for people to jump, say, from a public accounting firm to this position. They may not feel they're comfortable with the, the, the talents needed to do the job when they can learn it as they go, if we have proper people around. If I'm still around doing some things, helping out or even Baker Tilly can help and, and staff here can help train people too. So they're trying again at between 70 and 90. I talked to the partner at Baker Tilly and I said, what do your managers make? And she gave me the, you know, ballpark of the low end of our original. And once you get to be a manager at a public accounting firm, you're really looking partner track. And so they're not apt to leave a public accounting firm for that pay. So we want a step before that to be interested in coming here and not traveling as much and, you know, still have government experience in auditing and understand the fund systems and things like that. So, and we also had a little bit of a list from Baker Tilly and people that have left there recently to other jobs, but still would be a good fit for us. And Carla knows us pretty well. So the QTI Carla jumped all over that and is trying to get some of those people, but not very successful. So I'm hoping this new outreach will get somebody in here that can grow with the village here. There's a lot of tools already available, good notes to, to succeed with. So I think that's our, our best bet now. So they're kind of fishing in both waters, I think.
Just, just to add to that, I, and then I see your hand, Rebecca. So just to add to that, I spoke with two of the companies that we were looking at for the administrator position and asked them about finance director. And they both recommended independently the idea of dropping back. They, they both said that it's hard to get a finance director position or someone at that caliber. And, and said, if you get someone who wants, sees this as a, as a good career track and not just a lateral move, that you're more likely to get candidates. So we'll see. Rebecca?
Yeah, thanks. I, you know, I'm, I'm not trying to say that they're not doing what they need to do and this is probably a really good move to do this, but do you feel based on, on your communications with them that they truly are? I, I know they were, they didn't feel that they were gonna be able to help us given their staffing issues over the past, I guess, year. Do you feel that they're up to the task, QTI?
I think they're trying pretty hard and I'm helping them identify places to look. They just have more resources to do that and it's not good for me or Cory to be reaching out to other governments or even CPA firms and try to headhunt people. So they're basically hired gun to do that. I appreciate the question. It has crept into my mind, but I, I think they're, they're ahead of the, you know, they're, they're already down the path and we will have to pay them regardless. And I, I want to see another week or two go by here and see if there's any success.
Okay, thank you.
Jim?
I'm curious what that salary range, what sort of numbers of years of experience are we targeting?
From a public accounting firm, you're probably looking six to 10 years of experience in governmental.
Okay.
Which isn't, it's pretty good.
Yep, that's a, what I'd say is senior level engineers, so that's good experience. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions from, for Steve? Okay, anything you need from us on that, Steve? Okay, thank you. We'll stay tuned and, and, and keep on them. All right, the next item is update discussion and action pertaining to agreement with public administration associates for recruitment of a village administrator. It lists Steve, but it's me. So I'm gonna run through some of this with you. The first item that you have in your packet, there's five things I want to share with you tonight. One is the proposed contract. One is a salary range, a salary study. The other is a, an assessment form they want us to begin to work on if we go with the contract, their proposed schedule and then reference checks. All of this stuff has taken more time than I ever thought it would this week. So I apologize for getting this stuff to you today. I know it's hard when you're traveling like Rebecca is or when you're working to, to get through it, but we'll walk through it tonight and see if we can make some progress. I had sent the, the contract that they sent us to Al and Steve. Attached to this contract when we sign it would be the proposal. I didn't recopy that for everyone, but you've all seen their proposal. The contract is a contract with, shows payment in thirds. And then of course, the payment, we will get invoices for some expenses that are outside of this, but most of their expenses are contained within this agreement. We, I think, had some changes and I'll ask Al to identify it in some of the indemnification and records retention. I don't know if you want to address that at all?
I added a provision for record retention and that's basically to allow the village to comply with a public records request that might be received from the public villages required to produce, if requested, documents that are held by contracts if they are public records. So that standard provision I added takes care of that. Just trying to pull the agreement up so that I can remember what other changes we made. I did add a provision, you know, they're indicating that the process should take about 90 days. I did add a provision that if you haven't hired somebody within 180 days, you have the right to terminate the contract if you choose to do that. I think that's really it in terms of substance of what was changed from the original draft, add in the compensation provision.
Yep, it's a pretty standard and simple agreement. In all their, their interactions with communities, so the changes Al made, they said it the first time they've ever seen those changes, but they agreed to them. So thank you, Al. Questions on the contract or the agreement? It is for the amount that they proposed, the 13,000. And I don't think there's anything striking or unusual in it. So, questions? It's not? I'm sorry, Rebecca?
I'm not sure if this is pertinent to this particular point, but I'm just curious as to when we'll actually see a, the proposed language for the job description thing that shows what's required and what's desired quality page.
In your packet is a schedule. And we can, we were, we'll go through that, but in that schedule, you'll see the week of 9/22. You, you should see that information.
So sometime this, this, this week, that's tomorrow, 22nd?
Well, this week or next, yep.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
But what they want us to do is to fill out an assessment form and then they'll use that plus information that they're getting from, from the village on, on the village to produce some of their posting stuff. Bill?
I think what Rebecca is asking is 10/5, it comes back to us with, with the job list, you know, things like that.
You're right, Bill. You're right, Bill. Thank you. Other questions on the, on the contract? I will tell you that, and there's a copy in your, on, on your desk when you came in. I went through references and I talked to a lot of people and people wanted to talk a long time about their experiences. And I didn't have anybody give us a bad reference and, and I just kind of randomly picked through the list that they attached to the proposal. I summarized them into one document rather than saying, you know, Marty said X and David said Y. And I think that the one piece of advice that I got on communication was that it's important to have one point of contact for them and to recognize that you need to make sure that you talk with them, you know, regularly, that you really partner with them. But that they, they did get excellent marks on regular communication with the board, regular communication with the contact and, and with their candidates. A number of people said that if you get in their rolodex as a candidate, that you're qualified to get into their rolodex, that they really do a lot of research on their candidates. So I was very encouraged by that. If, I think I noted that I asked people to rate them one to five and with a total of like 30 points. And if, if all six of the people I talked to gave them a five, and I think it came out to 28. So, you know, they, they got very high, high marks. Questions on any of the references? You might want to just take a minute and read them before we go too far.
Mail those to me at some point this week so that I can at least look at them.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. In fact, Callie can maybe forward them to your email right away.
That's awesome.
Yep. Right? All right, it coming your way.
Awesome.
Other questions on the contract? So does the board feel comfortable knowing that the price is the same? Al is comfortable with the terms? They are ready to start tomorrow morning. They, I think, receive very high scores for references. And we know that we're on a tight timeline. So with all of that, I was hoping that people might be comfortable with moving forward with this contract.
I would say so and make a motion to proceed with an agreement with PPA.
All right, we have a motion by Colleen. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Abby?
I was just gonna say thank you for providing a summary of the references.
That's very helpful and basically is in line with what I heard from the person I talked to from Fort Atkinson. And I, I do like the timeline that they came up with. It's, it's a tight timeline, but it seems like it fits in all the necessary components and priorities. And I'm looking forward to filling out the survey too, so.
Good, good. All right. Any further questions? If not, all those in favor of approving the contract signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you. So, oh, Steve?
I believe we have a staff request to suspend and go to 8/5 because we have somebody from Quircazzan the meeting.
Correct. We have somebody from Quircazzan who would like to help us out with all of our land management and 8.5 was something that the board had brought forward. And we'd like to help Jake not have to stay on the meeting if not, without necessary, so.
Can, can we finish this item first?
I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
No, not quite yet. Wanted to talk about salary range stuff.
Okay.
Is that okay? As soon as we're done, I'll, I'll ask for a motion to do that. One of the things they need to work on the job posting is for us to identify a salary range. We have a, sent to you this afternoon, a, the salary surveys that is a combination of Wisconsin municipal administrators, DCCVA, WCMA, and several communities. And so in looking at this, what was recommended by public administrator associates, administration associates, I'm sorry, I said that wrong, was that perhaps a range for DeForest of 120 to 140 might make sense. So I wanted to put that out for review and, and discussion. Rebecca?
Yeah, I would just ask in terms of the, because I know, sorry, I'll get this question out eventually. Steve is currently doing both positions in his current position. These, and we're going to be splitting them apart. Are the positions that are on this survey, are they combination or are they just the administrator, not the financial person?
Well, it varies. Some communities have just an administrator, some have public works and administration. Some of them have other combinations. So, you know, communities do it differently. But I would say from the advice that I've gotten so far is that we need to be competitive to draw people and once we know, you know, if we're going to combine some position or we're going to, whatever we're gonna do, we might be adjusted within that range, but to attract people, we're, we're gonna have to have a reasonable salary range.
Yeah, I didn't have a problem with that. I was just curious as to if, because of that, if this was kind of in line with what we've been doing or if it's more in being separated. So.
I think it's, yeah, I think it's complimentary to what's going on. Colleen?
Well, I can tell you just from having worked at Middleton that, excuse me, they have two separate positions for administrator and finance director. So this would be administrator.
Okay, good information. Thanks.
All right, other questions? Jim?
Say I don't mind, say the salary ranger, we looked at the, I mean, I'm seeing different ranges or whatever municipalities. And I agree that's a good range of say 120 to 140. But also thinking about what we just talked about with the financial director, do we want to actually lower the range too to make it as an option for somebody maybe with how it is much of experience to grow? So I mean, do we want to have say 100 to 140 depending on experience? Because I'm looking for ideas or directions on that.
Feelings or opinions? Abby?
Yeah, I, I was kind of thinking around the same lines too. And I, I also didn't know if, if PAA had, had a recommendation for, or if anyone happens to know if, if there's a, I guess, best practice for range, like if it's 10, 20, 30, 40, or if it's, it doesn't really matter. It's more what we're looking for.
I can only tell you what I was told. And, and, and that by PAA was that you need it to be high enough to attract the caliber of people that, that we probably want. And you need to be competitive with communities around us. I can tell you that there are many communities, Shorewood Hills, Middleton, what, I mean, there are just a number of communities that are hiring administrators right now. So we are competing with Dane, folks in Dane County and, and surrounding communities around Dane County. So we, we need to have a salary range that, you know, people are excited about. And that also allows them to be encouraged to, to be with us. So it, it's a sales job two ways. It's not just the candidates selling themselves to us. In this market, it's us selling the community and the job to a candidate as well.
Yeah. I, I Yeah, I personally don't have a problem with the salary range you were mentioning. I think we do need to be competitive. We don't need to price ourselves out of the market by going too low. But we also need to keep in mind our budget too somewhat. But, so I, I don't really have a problem with the, the, the range that was recommended.
Okay. Other comments or motions? Colleen?
I don't have a problem with the salary range there either. And if you need a motion, I would make a motion that we set the administrator's salary at a range of 120,000 to 140,000.
We have a motion by Colleen, a second by Rebecca. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you. And then you did see in your packet, the assessment form. This will come to you in the next day or so with explanation, just a little introductory paragraph. The other thing that, this will go to staff, it'll go to the, to the board. And any key community leaders that we think might want to have input like Eric Greenes or, you know, other, other people in the community. So if, we don't have to spend the time tonight thinking of names, but if, if folks have suggestions or, or want, want to get input, let me know. So I just, this is more informational. Also, if you're comfortable with it, if there are other things that people are wanting to add, again, let me know. And this will help formulate the, the position description that we talked about. And then finally, the draft schedule, as, as you've noted, it's tight. But it gets us there. There may be adjustments as we go forward based on, you know, when the candidates come, how we get them screened, how we, we set up the, the process towards the end. But the goal is to have some overlap with Steve and the person coming in. The other, the other part of it is, I was very impressed when I, when I talked to a number of communities with their excitement about having meet and greets or interviews with the staff. They, one community, it was Shorewood Hills, did rotating 45-minute interviews with board members and staff. And over two days, they just ran candidates through the process. They also, they also did a community reception and let people meet, meet and greet. So, you know, there are ways to do that in the end and to build that into the process so that there's a lot of involvement and comfort with the process. So as we go through this, this timeline going forward and we know what's happening, we may want to spend some time figuring out what we want to do with that, that part of it. Now I think I might be done. I'm sorry. I needed to make sure we got this stuff. So send me anybody you want to get the assessment and we'll, we'll try to put a, a community group together. So now you want to move 8.5 forward? Is that the one?
Yes.
Yes, and I would make a motion that we suspend and move to 8.5 at this time.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Tashidra. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. It says Jim Simpson.
I guess, I will start it off is that there was some work along the Yhara River near my home. And I started a conversation with Greg and it led me into some ideas because I also am active with the Friends of the Year, Yhara River Headwaters. In a number of years past, I don't know who we hired, maybe somebody else does in the room, but they went and reviewed the Yhara River and offered some stream bank enhancements. And a couple of things we did was, we realigned some of the rocks to bake a better stream bed. And I think two different locations and another more visual was where they do the rubber duck races. They took that stream bank out and put root balls in there to help preserve the stream in that location. But what I remember about that study is it was a nice overview of the whole river and then they targeted different locations. And why I bring this up with, I'm thinking we could do a similar look at the habitat along the river. And I wonder if we want to involve and ask for assistance again from the Friends of the Yhara River Headwater. I discussed that again a bit with Greg and I think potentially judge even too. And what I think they are proposing tonight is that Quircazzan is on the line and might have some thoughts on that. I haven't talked with Greg long enough to know exactly what, what is being proposed for tonight.
I just knew this was coming up, so I wanted to include Jake Michaels from Quircazzan Land Stewardship Services. He, they work on our natural areas along the river, Marie, Schwerer Property, Western Green, all the natural areas. So I just wanted to bring him in and have, let him tell, tell you what he thinks that should be done along the river. I think he's a great, acts a great person of, you know, be part of this talk.
Wonderful. Jake, do you want to unmute yourself and share your thoughts?
I wonder if he's, um, he's on.
Jake, are you there? There he is.
I, I, yeah, this is my, my first Zoom call, so. But I'm unmuted. You can hear me now?
Yep.
Yep, we can hear you.
So, yeah, in, in, in general, you know, we take care of the natural areas in the forest, try to promote more native species, get the invasive species out of there. And one of the things we do is try to clear out the river corridor for a lot for kayakers and paddlers so they can make it through. But also for some flood mitigation purposes, we want to get those log jams out of there. So when these big, heavy rainfalls we get all the time are coming through, we don't get those floodwaters damming up and flooding the nearby residents. So that's, that's what we've done a lot of is, is trying to keep the river clear. And one aspect in long term of keeping the river clear would be to try to start to remove all of the things that will have been and will continue to fall into the river, which are all the less valuable, less desirable trees like box elder trees. There's a lot of invasive brush like buckthorn and honeysuckle. And a lot of undesirable vegetation that's just kind of filling in all that space, but not really letting any of the more desirable vegetation to come in there. Instead, if you go underneath those trees and that brush, you'll see a lot of exposed soil. And so that's a big problem when we get these heavy rainfall events. A lot of that exposed soil is gonna be washing into the river. It's gonna create muckier water. So a good long-term goal would be to slowly remove as much of that overstory as we can. You know, i- if you were to try to do it all at once, it would be a really expensive, really overwhelming job. So to kind of just chip away at the mountain is the move here. But as we remove the overstory, we will fill in that space. There are some areas that recently have been, the overstory's been taken out, I think, near Jim's house. And all that exposed soil heading into this fall and winter, that's a really great place to put seeds for native plants that will come up. They'll go through the natural process they need over the winter to get themselves into the ground and germinate next spring. And then those perennial plants will put down some really deep roots that can help stabilize the banks and do a lot more, you know, clean the water before it runs off into the river. So we don't have mucky water. We have nice clean water flowing through the Yhara.
Thank, thank you, Jake. So I would ask Jim and, and Greg and, and Jake, what is it that would be useful from the village board to be helpful? Steve, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I guess I'm just curious what Jim is looking for as far as habitat. What I'm hearing so far is stabilization of the, of the soils and getting rid of some invasives and undesirables. But is there a specific habitat you're looking for to attract a certain insect or animal or fish?
Well, one concern that I was bringing up is that we're removing a lot of like the, the cover. And what I don't have expertise in, but the little bit I do know is it seems like cold water is important to a lot of like trout and stuff. And there is some trout like down in the innovation area. And looking at Western Green, say near the park there, it's really rather open to sunlight. And I know a lot of those willows seem to be at their, their long-term age and dying down now. So I look at, again, a layperson, it's like, should we be replenishing that area with trees that will grow up and replace these willows? And again, along Western Green, because that's where I walk, there's areas where there's a plethora of willows, all the little scraplings that are coming up. And there's that habitat that we want. So I, I don't have the answer. That's where I was seeking more professional opinion. I, I'm personally not for all restoring it to grassland because I think there needs to be a variety of habitat. And I don't know really what our residents or our board wants for habitat. I personally like forest habitat more than prairie, but.
So were you suggesting, the last time you brought this up, I'm not sure if it was the last meeting or the meeting before, that we might try and have a small study done to?
That's what we did as a friends group, but I think some probably funds from the village to investigate the, say the, that was the river habitat. And this is, be just more of a river bank review of the habitat. And sort of come up with some like targeted areas that might be most applicable. And I mean, I say this, it doesn't have to be, but it'd be nice to even have a line item that yearly we do some restoration or something.
Rebecca and then Steve?
Yeah, I
Yeah, I really like the idea of what Jim is talking about doing. It, it's kind of like good forest management, only in this case it's good bank management. And making sure that one, our banks are healthy and that we're not getting that overabundance of, like they said, that undesirable stuff that can really create issues that we don't want. But really make sure that we're putting in what we do want. And like you said, we've got some trees and, and stuff that's kind of in their last stages. We do need to be thinking about replenishing or whatever, or how we're going to do that. And I do like the idea of maybe having a line item, even, you know, just for a minimal study type thing to make sure that we're doing, or whatever it was he was just saying, to make sure that we are, we're being good to our environment as we're moving forward.
Okay. Thank you. Steve?
Yeah, so good thing is we are being good. We do have money in the stormwater budget for such things as the erosion control, things like that, that the friends used to receive. I think it was $10,000 for the Yehara and $10,000 for Togan Creek. They never took their money. So I think there's still $20,000 in the budget set aside for management flood purposes type of thing. That's why that funding source is being used. There's also money in another fund called, I think it's Park in Richmond or Park in Open Space that comes from a cell tower by Firestone. And that money was earmarked for conservancy enhancements. So that gets us beyond the, the banks and that's what Quarkus does a lot of work for us. I'm pretty sure it's planned ahead and targeted and that's something Greg and Judd and I suppose, did we, Jake's still there? They do a lot of work in that. I mean, that'll be along the river, but there's stuff done every year and it could be 20,000 or more done a year. So I don't know if they have a study. Study's probably a good idea, but I guess let them talk a little bit more.
So from, from our standpoint here at Quarkus, we have a budget of $5,000 per year that we use to go down the river and clear blockages. And then as I recently learned that the Friends of Yehara Headwaters does volunteer days sometimes and they'd had one this Saturday. There was a substantial group out clearing tires and garbage and trees out of the river. Myself and one other Quarkuser went to help out with them and that was, yeah, great to see people out there doing that. But as from our standpoint, we are targeted in what we get out as far as, you know, getting the most important thing, but there is a lot more than $5,000 worth of things to clean out of that river per year. So, yeah, we basically hit the highest priority stuff in the best parts of the river. But yeah, there's a lot of parts of the river that could use more intensive management. But in, as far as studies go, you guys had back in 2014, sort of ecological assessment done of all your natural areas by Taylor Conservation. And he's who then recommended you get some contractors in there and then we eventually ended up in there. And, but since then, there hasn't really been anything much of a significant ecological assessment done.
And are you recommending that, Jake?
I think, yeah, some sort of assessment of the river could be very valuable. We don't necessarily do that sort of assessment, but there are certainly environmental civil engineers out there working on projects of restoring rivers to how they ought to be. And so we could help direct you to some of those consultants.
Okay. Well, let me take Rebecca's question and then we'll come back and see what we're going to do.
Yeah, just one, one other brief questions, question. Would there be any possibility of Dane County or DNR being able to assist in this type of stuff? I, I, I don't know if they already do that or is this strictly village?
I, I would suspect they do. Jim?
My memory of the stream bank enhancement is that we got some extra funding even outside of the village for that.
Well, here's a thought. Let me throw it out. That Jim and Greg and Jake and, and whoever else from Judd's team that he wanted to involve, come up with a suggested approach. We know there's some funds available and come back to us with a proposal.
That sounds great. We, we can definitely do that.
Yep. Sounds good.
Abby?
Yeah, I just, I'm, I'm, thank you, Jim, for bringing this forward. I'm very excited about this. And coincidentally, I was fortunate enough to do my first, help out with my first river cleanup this last Saturday. So I really appreciate what the friends do. And I bring that up because I got to visually see, you know, what Jake was just talking about, where some parts of the bank had a lot of vegetation and some were pretty bare. And, and then seeing, and seeing, you know, different, you know, some parts of the river were pretty clear and some were, you know, very murky. And I, I very much appreciate any kind of study or ecological assessment to, you know, see. I think we're already doing great things with the river, but see, you know, what, what we can do to take it to the next level. And I like Jim's suggestion of like also more holistic, like what, you know, are we planting certain kinds of trees or vegetation that brings, supports the kind of habitat or wildlife that needs, needs to be there and we want there. So, thank you.
Does someone want to make a motion to request that the guys come up with a plan? Or do we want to just give them thumbs up?
I'll make a motion that we do what Jim said and allow Jim, Greg and Judd's team to just come up with an idea and bring it back to the board for further review.
We have a motion. We have a second? We have a second? Yep, we have a motion and second by Rebecca. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right. We'll be anxious to see what you come up with.
All right.
All right, we're back on seven point five. I sent to you a, or it was in your packet, a next version of a recognition policy. Jim and Rebecca got, get, sent me comments and I put their, their, I tried their language and if they want to change it, they can, in blue and red. But I'd like to hear from more of you. So what I was going to recommend tonight is that we can have some discussion, but I was going to ask that folks really go through this, read this language and send, send any additional comments so that we can include them in a policy. I think that the, the major changes that I saw with, with, and thank you, Jim and Rebecca. Those were good comments that we got. I appreciated that. Jim, Jim made some, he's in red, his changes. And he was suggesting that we lowered the number for years of service for a board member. From, I think I had put a number of 10 in and we had to, and lowered the number of years for staff recommendation. I should, I should let them talk about some of their changes. Rebecca put in, she wanted to see us take some of the ifiness, if I may, out of when things were approved and to be more affirmed on when we're going to give a resolution or a proclamation or certificate out and to make sure that there's an appeal process. And I think Jim raised that, as, well, Jim raised the appeal process. And I, I put that on the end. He wanted to make sure that if there was concern that someone didn't get recognized, that, that there'd be a way to bring it back to the board. So I would open it for discussion or comment, Rebecca?
Yeah, one of the, the comments I had given you, I don't know that it really got in there, was I don't think that we need to be having a recognition policy, a recognition policy that gives discretion for whether or not they happen or not. I think it needs to be firmly in place that if somebody serves, they need to be recognized. Because as soon as you put discretion in there, it leads to the potential of bias or potential political whatever. And I don't think that needs to be a part of this. I think if somebody serves, they need to be recognized, period, end of discussion. That's just my personal opinion. And if we do it that way, then I don't see what, and, and I, I appreciate what Jim was saying about the appeal process. But if we have it that way, then there's really no, there's no need for a, an appeal process because it's automatic. So, and it becomes fair, it becomes equitable, it becomes consistent. And I, I just, I just think we need to take out any potential bias or anything like that and it just needs to be automated. That's my two cents.
Thank you. Jim, did you have any comments on, and, and the changes you had recommended?
Just one that I, I thought I recommended, but I don't see it here. Maybe I forgot to put it. But for the formal resolution, I meant to recommend, say, years for being on a committee. And I suggested like 15. I mean, I'll just bring up like one example as I remember like a Bob Noonan, that he like served on the planning and zoning for a long time. And to me, it was a great service that he did, but he would not have reached the formal resolution, which I think he as an individual should have received.
Okay, that, that's helpful. All right, so I would ask if folks are in agreement that you give it one more read. It's kind of hard to do, do a policy in a committee or in a, in a board setting, but I'd really like your input. So if you can send your changes and then we'll get some help in, in drafting this. And Rebecca, if I've, or Jim missed what you intended, feel free to go right into the document and put your language. And, and I would ask others to look at it too. And then at the next meeting, I would ask that we be ready to review and approve. Bill?
Yeah, I agree with Rebecca's assessment about bias and fairness. And, yeah, just take out the wording and I'm fine.
All right. Thank you. All right, Abby?
Um, just a question, just to help me, like when I look at this in more depth. Under formal resolutions, the retirement of a staff member, is that, is that just like, you know, Village of DeForest? Or does that include like kind of the branches under that? Like the senior center, the library, fire district? Just wondering what, what staff member means in that context.
For me, it, it would because they're part of the village family. But, you know, why don't you send that, that comment in and then that'll help me and we'll, we'll get it in. It's a good comment. Thank you, Abby. All right. I appreciate your willingness to do this work and get, we'll get this done. Thank you. All right. Moving on to eight point one, discussion regarding 2022 budget. Steve?
Nothing further.
Nothing further? Okay. Eight point two, authorization to accept playground grant and proceed with purchase of equipment. And that follows up on the committee of the whole discussion we had with Reese. So I would ask if someone wants to make a motion to accept the playground grant.
Motion to accept the grant.
We had three simultaneous motions. So we'll, we'll take Jim this time and I'll ask for a second.
Second.
Second. Pick one, girls. Just pick one. All right. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Eight point three, discussion and possible action regarding request to order squad car prior to 2022. Chief?
There's a memo in your packet. Basically Dodge is shutting down their plant early next year. So they're going to cut the window for ordering off early, which will be before the budget approval. I'm just asking to order one, which is what we traditionally order every year. And then if there's additional funds, I can work to see if we can acquire a second one.
Okay. Are there?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Jim?
I'm just asking for clarification. The motion, is it for one vehicle right now? And the second is in the next budget, if that is available?
It's, it's to order one vehicle down and then if funds were available, I'd try to acquire a second one. But that, the second one would only come after the budget approval.
Okay.
If it stays in the budget.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Chief. All right. Eight point four really needs to come after closed. So I would ask for a motion to move eight point four to after closed.
So moved.
We have a motion by Rebecca. Do we have a second? Second? We have a second? All those in discussion, there, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Jane?
Yeah, Rebecca?
Could we take like a three-minute break?
Sure, we could. Take five, as they say.
Okay.
All right, we're gonna come back and start our meeting.
William, Steve?
There, there are no presentation of ordinances, so we'll move to 10, presentation of resolutions. 10.1, Resolution 2021 dash zero eight one, resolution directing the village finance director to write off uncollectible personal property taxes. Steve?
Yeah, staff did a memo, was in your packet. I'll ask, any questions? First of all, did Chris Cooper sign to appear in front of the board? Sorry.
Yes, he did. He's mine.
Yes. Okay, very, thanks.
The Three Stooges or the Three Musketeers?
Any questions? Sorry.
I would make a motion to approve a resolution directing the village finance director to write off uncollectible personal property taxes.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have, Rebecca seconded it. All right. Any discussion or questions? All right, I see several. Jim and Abby, then Bill, I didn't know if your hand was up. Okay.
I just want to question, why not just leave this on the books and put it off to the side?
So are you suggesting no efforts to collect?
That's my suggestion because they may, what if some of these businesses come back into the village and then we just collect at that time rather than writing it off now?
That's a choice. I know there is accounting related to it. It just sits there. It's doubtful account. So it's, it's not doing any good other than possibly coming in later, yes.
And I would suggest that going over it frequently would cost more than the hundred. And I would suggest that going over it frequently would cost more than the hundred and six dollars or the fifty seven dollars that's on the book. It's, it's expensive to just leave something there and have to, to re-review it. My thought. Rebecca?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with, uh, writing them off. Does this go on their credit record? Is it reported to the credit agencies?
No.
Why not? Why not?
I'm getting a, a no from Al. We don't report this.
Is there a specific reason why we don't?
I can look into that if the board chooses for that to happen.
I would love to know why we don't because, I mean, these are obligations that people had and they did not follow through on them. And I, I don't have a problem if we don't. I just would like to know the reason why.
Okay. All right, Abby, you had a question?
Well, actually, I think somebody else already asked it and it was answered, so.
Okay, thank you. Al?
I just wanted to point out that some of these, um, uncollectible personal property tax bills over the years are truly uncollectible. Um, uncollectible because the business has gone out of business. The corporation's been dissolved or the LLC has been dissolved. Sometimes it's because of bankruptcy, in which case you're legally precluded from collecting them. So, um, these are not generally items that, um, are worth pursuing legally. And typically you have to sue these people to collect personal property taxes. Fine for people in my business, but not so great for people who are owed the property taxes. So I just wanted to add those things. It's the fact that some of these legally cannot be collected.
Okay. Jim?
I just wanted to clarify a little bit why I was asking because, say like my father, he owned apartments. And when he'd get to a point where he'd have to do collections on people, maybe not the best policy, but a lot of the times he would just leave a portion out there. So it would always show up on our credit record, so they'd have to pay it off at some point. And I went through a purchase of a short sale and I was, it's impressive how many bills I had to pay off to get a short sale to close. And some of them were like these fifty dollar type things that were put as liens on properties.
So, Al?
The, the way a debt like that is put as a lien on properties by taking a judgment, which means you have to sue the person, get a judgment for fifty dollars, dock it the judgment, then it becomes a lien on real estate. Personal property taxes are not a lien on real estate.
That would be an expensive act. Luann?
I just want to add that staff really goes the extra mile to try to even find these people. And the reason why these people are still on this list is because they're unfindable. They just kind of fall off the radar. We try every avenue we can to locate them and to reach them, to try to get this money. And we, they're just gone. So that's the other part of it. There's nobody to file these claims against because we can't find them.
What I just wanted to note that I'm impressed the list is as small as it is, which is a recognition of how well the staff does in collecting, um, the taxes. There's a, a huge number that goes through here. So, good work. Rebecca?
Yeah, I would just reiterate, I, like I said, I don't have a problem with, uh, this being written off. I, and, and I totally get all the reasons behind all this stuff. Um, I literally just want to know why we wouldn't report it to the credit agencies. That's it. I just know that.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Um, okay, well, we've noted the question. Um, at some point, we'll, we'll, we'll look at that. We'll also note that some of these are not individuals. So, you know, Men of Cloth or Donald, um, or Zenith American Solutions, it may not, they may not have a place for us to, to even report against them. So I would entertain a motion to approve resolution as, as written.
We already have one.
Oh, do we? I'm sorry. Thank you. See, I get caught up in the discussion. So if there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Sorry, I forgot. All right, we're moving on to ten point two, resolution 2021 dash zero eight two, a memorandum of understanding with the village of Windsor for a trail connection between Fox Hill Estates subdivision and Windsor's Community Park. Judd?
Cool. No, I'm just kidding. Uh, so we have an MOU, a memorandum of understanding that was drafted. Windsor approved it last Thursday at their board meeting. That's due to approve tonight. Um, and then we can go forward with, um, implementing that trail connection between Fox Hills into Windsor's Community Park.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Colleen, a second by Bill to approve. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, moving on. We're on ten point three. A resolution extending a memorandum of agreement with the Community Development Authority. Michelle?
Thank you. Uh, this is a resolution that was in your packet with the memo. Um, and it extends the period of the existing agreement that was also in your packet from May 11th of 2021. Um, the time period was created to allow for information to be gathered to make a more comprehensive agreement between the village and the CDA. Um, the CDA staff is still collecting that information to inform a better agreement and asking for an extension, um, to the end of the year. And they passed a resolution, the CDA passed a resolution at their meeting last week to request that of the village. And really, um, as I said, is to get a better agreement. We're kind of living this for the first year. So, um, seeing things kind of fall into place and getting more financial information would be very helpful.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Colleen, a second by Bill. Any further discussion? Abby?
Uh, I'm fully in favor of this and I just want to say thank you to the CDA, to Michelle and Steve. I, I fully support efforts of the CDA and, um, in particular, uh, the housing division part of it. It's such an important service, uh, for our community, especially, um, you know, a lot of our vulnerable residents. So I appreciate, you know, all the time and effort being put into, um, providing the best services possible and also like the assessment that's going on to figure out how to manage future needs. So thank you.
Thank you, Abby.
Can I add, since trustee Lowery said that, that the, um, maintenance, um, staff, Zach Rolkey and Ron Galdas are very, very appreciative of the village board and their support of them as well. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Well, we're making progress here. Ten point four, a resolution 2021 dash zero eight four, a resolution authorizing the Director of Public Services to execute an agreement with RGH Houston for fill and grading of Fox Hills Park. Judd or Reese?
Yep, so this is, um, we brought this back before the board a little while ago. We need to level off Fox Hills Park for soccer. RG Houston is in the area doing work. They have free fill for us. Um, and so we solicited them, what would be the cost for you to, uh, fill this in and grade it for us? Um, and this was the, the price they came back with. If we've gone to somebody else, we may have to call, pay for additional trucking fees and/or the fill itself. Um, so it's because they're in the area, they're working there, um, and they have access to that material that, um, we've selected them to, to provide this service for us.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, Rebecca made a motion. Colleen seconds and, um, I would ask if there's any other discussion. Abby?
Um, I'm wondering, the people that, uh, made the motion and seconded it, if they would be open to a friendly, uh, for the second whereas, um, instead of saying has solicited estimates, say has solicited an estimate, they would, uh, accept it? Just, just to make it, make sure the resolution is in line with, because it sounds like we, we solicited one estimate instead of several, so.
Oh, in other words, we only solicited the one, the one company. Is that what you're asking about, Abby?
Uh, yeah, that's my understanding. So I just, if, if that's the case, then I just want that wording changed. If, if, uh, those, the person that made the motion seconded are okay with it.
Judd, would that be an accurate statement?
Yes, sorry.
I, I have no problem with that then. I would accept that friendly.
Colleen?
Fine.
Okay. All right, we have the friendly. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Ten point five, a resolution 2021 dash zero eight five, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the village of DeForest and the DeForest Area School District for the School Resource Officer Program. Chief Olson?
This, uh, there's a memo in your, or the resolutions in your packet with the MOU. This is something I've been working on for some time. I've been working with the school district on, um, re-upping the MOU since about March, which is typical with us. I talked to Steve about bringing this before the board, uh, several weeks ago. Just had to get the school board to finally agree. The only difference between this year's and last year's MOU is the dates. Everything, all the terms, everything remains the same. The amount of coverage from the school district remains the same.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Jim?
Just one question. I don't want to stop this. I think this is a great, uh, service that we're providing. But the question I want to raise is, have we ever contacted other municipalities? Or is this typically is what done in other communities where, say, a high, a high school services multiple municipalities, would there ever be a cost sharing agreement with, say, the whatever other village and towns that go to that school? Or is it more typically the location of the school is, say, the village or city that takes on that obligation?
Um, I would have to say that it's, um, we can only service the schools that are in the village of DeForest. That's where you have jurisdiction. So Harvest and Windsor Elementary are obviously not in the village of DeForest, therefore we can't without some kind of MOU with the sheriff's department in the village of Windsor service that. That's something the school district is, uh, they're working on a plan for that, but it's outside of my purview.
So, so, but was your question, should Windsor or other communities be sharing in the cost?
That was sort of the question I was getting to because here we got, say, like a similar situation would be maybe the senior center where we have populations that share that service. You could maybe look at the SCO as a similar thing, but I don't necessarily want to completely question that because I don't know how it works in other communities. It's like I'm guessing like in, say, for instance, the Madison or a larger city, there's small township populations that go to Madison, but I'm assuming Madison takes on the responsibility of providing the SCO. It's like you said, chief, that's their location or their service district, so.
They're paying us, right?
The school district is paying us, right, which is funded from both municipalities. So we have, you know, DeForest kids go to Windsor Elementary and in some instances go to Harvest. So I, I don't have any information relative to other jurisdictions or other municipalities.
Rebecca?
So just so I make sure I understand, because that was really a good question, Jim. Thank you for that. Um, we, our, our SRO services all of the schools within the district, not just within the village of DeForest, correct?
No, eh, we only can service the schools that are inside the village of DeForest. So we, right, Eagle Point, we're at Yohara, we're at the middle school and the high school.
Gee, uh, is there anybody that's helping them at, at Harvest and Windsor?
Uh, no, that is a designated school resource officer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Check register was in your packet. There were several minutes, commission and committee reports, or minutes. We'll move to the administrators' report, Steve?
Nothing to share.
All right. Update regarding the library? Jill?
Uh, not much. We're gonna meet in about a week and a half. They had the survey results closed on September 1st and we'll be looking at that at the next board meeting and they're working on their budget.
Okay. How about the Public Safety Committee? Shidra?
Thank you. Nothing to report.
Okay. The area community and senior center, Abby, do you have anything?
Yeah, I guess the big update is that, um, that we have an ad hoc, uh, search committee in place because Barb Cooper, the current executive director, uh, will be retiring early next year. And, um, we approved a job description and job posting and that's already live, so, uh, feel free to share. I think I saw it on the village's Facebook page today or yesterday, so, um, any help you can do, sharing that widely. You know, similar to the administrator position, we want as many people as possible to know about it and get some really good, uh, qualified applicants to choose from. And, um, we did discuss a little bit more about, uh, our, you know, I, I brought up to, uh, village president Wolf, Cahill Wolfgram about, um, that we might want a stakeholders' meeting sometime in the future to kind of discuss among all the municipalities about how we might want the center to grow and develop. You know, whether it's, um, grow where we're at or, or build additional facilities, things like that. And, um, and we were trying to, and we were thinking that we're gonna kind of look at that a little bit closely, I guess internally with the commission to figure out how we'd want to do that and, um, what's, what things we'd actually like to discuss. So I think it might, we might hold off on that till early next year as, as well with the transition of a new executive director. That might, um, be a good time, but just, I guess, kind of keep that on your radar that, um, we do want to have discussions coming up with the municipalities about, um, because there are, there are more older residents and we want to make sure that we serve them appropriately and have enough, uh, physical space as well, so. Okay, I think that's about it.
Thank you. Um, the Community Development Authority, Rebecca, do you want to take that one?
Um, well, I'll, I'll, I'll let you do the majority of this one, but I do want to say that I think we're making some really good progress with, uh, the addition of the, the sub commit, the sub, I forget how you, what the name of it.
Technical advisory.
Thank you, the technical advisory, advisory task force. I think that's been super helpful with really, uh, allowing us to focus, um, on the specific issues related to the, the economic development and the, uh, uh, identifying those areas of the village that, um, could potentially use redevelopment that may be appropriate. And so that's really helpful because that takes a lot of time to do. And doing that kind of outside, but still in a public way, I think has been really helpful, uh, to streamline our meetings. And, um, I just, I think we're going in a really good direction. Uh, there's still a lot, a lot of work to do. But, um, I think we're heading, heading into a positive direction now.
Great. And, and Rebecca was, was referring to, we're advised, we're, we're identifying potential redevelopment areas around the community. So, um, that, that's been exciting. We, we, um, also are looking at some of the financial challenges of We, we also are looking at some of the financial challenges of Jefferson Square and and public housing. And we'll continue to try and sift through that and come up with a strategy. DeForest Windsor Fire and EMS, Colleen?
Chief of Fever and his EMS chief, Tony DeSello, are coming up with a pretty creative plan for instead of having to add on another medic and an advanced EMT using LTEs and the advanced EMT position to cover on Sundays. This will keep him below his budget and most importantly lighten the load on his pay down call people.
Right.
And I guess that was the biggest thing we talked about.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Colleen, did they talk about whether they hired a new person or not?
I can't hear anything.
Sorry, I missed the button. He did not mention that he had hired anyone that I recall. He's got a lot of efforts underway to hire.
I was just wondering, because I was part of the interview process for some of the candidates, and I just wanted to know if somebody was selected. They didn't, they didn't bring it up at the meeting, so. Bill?
Is there any talk about the cost of the second station, equipping it? Personnel, the building, any idea? Just a rough idea?
Not at this point. The only thing that the concern was at this point is just getting the land.
And a recognition that we need time to really review costs and and needs and demand and all of those parts, so.
Generally looked at like five years down the road.
Yeah, there's a lot to look at.
Yeah.
Yes, there is.
Yep. Okay. If there's no other comments, we'll move on to my report. I had two things. I wanted to mention that Al sent to all of you the requested legal opinion. And so you should have that in your hands now. I participated in a League of Wisconsin Municipalities conference call earlier, I guess, late last week. And they identified a whole number of AA or grant programs that are funded with ARPA funds that I've sent to staff and, you know, for us to look at. But as we began to talk about ARPA and what we're going to want to plan for our own community, I found it helpful to know what what's available at a state level. And Secretary Brennan from DOA outlined a number of neighborhood investment and infrastructure projects and other things that can be applied for. And so it gives us a clue as to what not to try and duplicate or or to do. And I know that Dane County is coming out with a variety of programs too. So I'm hoping we, we look at that as we begin to talk through what we want to do with the the funds we're going to get. And then I'd only mentioned that there's an executive council of the MMSD meeting on September twenty second, and they're still taking nominations. So we'll be dealing with with nominating people to serve there. I think that's all I had, so I would move then to look at moving into closed session.
Motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Did someone say second?
Second.
All right, Bill, thank you. I'm sorry. All those in, oh, we need a roll call.
Trustee Alan?
Aye.
Trustee Lingraff? Trustee Lowery?
Aye.
Trustee Little?
Aye.
Trustee Simpson? Trustee Witherspoon?
Aye.
President Cahill Wolfram?
Aye.
Motion carries. Yeah, we need, yep, now we're good.
An answer to your, your email, Rebecca, is yes.
Awesome.
Okay, so now it really is time to get on the couch, get my flannel nightgown out. So let's get the eight point four, or eight, the motion as we come into open session to reflect the decision we made regarding compensation. So I would ask for a motion to give discretion to Michelle and Steve to divide the eighteen thousand dollars in December amongst those staff that have been doing the work of the CDA. So moved? Abby and Jim? Al?
If I could just suggest clarifying that, based on the discussion, that allocating it to employees, including themselves.
Oh. But are you okay with that as?
Yes.
I'll accept that friendly. The other point of clarification is that we wanted them to report the amounts
Yes.
back to us.
Yes.
Okay.
Can I read that back?
Sure.
Okay, to just, to give discretion to Michelle Lowery and Administrator Steve Fagerin to divide the eighteen thousand amongst the staff, including themselves, that have been doing the work of the CDA and report the amounts back to the village board.
Good. All right, we have a motion and a second to clarification.
The only other thing that I think requires clarification is what eighteen thousand we're talking about.
Where it came from?
Yeah.
Okay, the eighteen thousand, which is the two thousand dollars per month paid by the CDA to the village beginning in April.
If you're moving or in second should.
I approve that. We've had it accepted, so. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Jim?
Can I add? I don't think it needed to be part of the motion, but I'm personally indifferent to when it gets reported, before or after the distribution.
Same here.
Yeah, and it it's likely to be a little while before that decision is made, so. All right, now, looking at the agenda, I would ask if there's any other business that law fully comes before the board. Rebecca?
Yeah, just following up from the, the, the committee of the whole, my question during that as far as getting an agenda item for the code of conduct. Is this something that we need to officially move on or will it just happen?
Oh, I can put it on the agenda.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
But we'll need to define it. I mean, where are we going with it, so?
Oh, basically, I'm just wanting, I want us to determine, one, is it enforceable? If it's not enforceable, then should we make it enforceable? Or is it just going to be?
A covenant, yeah, okay.
Because if it's not enforceable, it's, I mean, there's been some not too nice things happen, and I want to make sure that everybody is actually on the same page.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Otherwise, I would accept a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned at eight fifty five.
Hasta la vista.